Stormwater, building the stormwater infrastructure because they had to call the person to say they are awarded the bid. So that should be starting soon. And the meeting, the town hall meeting that was held at North Carol High School Monday night, that I think it went very well. They talked about how they want to start with grass fields. They're starting with four fields and going up to six and start with the outside and also keep up with the auditorium as they had lots of plays and everything they're doing in the auditorium, running out the gyms. They were given money in lieu of taxes because the tax rate was higher than anticipated. The county gave them money to be able to allow North Carol Rec to use the gyms, do not have to pay either anything or full price, but to allow the community to use the gyms and the fields. So I think, I think the meeting went very well. Did you add anything to that, Deb?
No, I think it's great. I think they're very open to ideas, suggestions. They're there all the time. They said feel free to stop in and ask any questions or offer anything. They're very community oriented. They were great. I mean, most of it was question and answer because they really do care what people, the questions people had.
And the sheriff's department will remain in the building?
I can, I can, I missed the meeting unfortunately, but I will say that the plays at the auditorium, I've been to three or four of the plays. They're fabulous and it's really great. It is wonderful to have that kind of connection in the community. It's really, it's really a treasure.
You sit in the front row at everyone?
Pardon me?
You sit in the front row at every?
Absolutely, I do. There are my, two of my neighbors and I go and they already gonna have a sign for us. Those are our seats. Yes, it's great.
And they did a little snippet of Nonsense, which is the play that's going on now. So that was cute. It was nice.
Yeah, we're coming to that. We're gonna see that one. Okay, anything else, Tammy?
We just continue to have interest in the vacant buildings on Main Street, so keep you posted.
Thank you. And it looks wonderful to see Main Street awake and so many businesses opening up and the ones that are open, it's wonderful. I'm really thrilled. We all should be. Okay, we have on the agenda next approval of signage. I'm gonna pronounce this right, I hope. Taqueria?
Taqueria.
Taqueria, I did pretty good. How you like that? 841 South Main Street. If you would come forward, please. State your name.
Tony Ogden, 841 South Main and I'm with Lunazul.
Oh, okay.
Tony, you want to tell them a little bit about what you're doing because I know a couple of people have asked me, is that a new business? I'm like, well.
Yeah, okay. So we've been opening the Lunazul restaurant for just over four years now. And we have leased additional space next to us that we're going to occupy. We're awaiting final permits hopefully for this week. And that expansion is going to be primarily a taqueria. So it'll be fast food for pickup. So you can walk in, have a counter, you can order tacos and sandwiches. It's not a full kitchen. It's just a quick takeout. We've also got some additional dining spaces being added in the space and some additional administrative office space and things like that in the back. But it's an additional line of business for us in that Toby taught us one thing is that takeout can be a pretty nice thing to have and the community's responding really well to that. So we saw that as an opportunity to invest a little bit more into takeout business. And so taqueria primarily drive takeout.
So is it connected to Lunazul or are they two separate entities?
So we actually busted the wall between the two spaces.
Okay.
It's a unified one. It's two suites, but it's one place.
What does taqueria say? What does that mean?
So a taqueria is a Spanish word for making tacos where, think of a taco kitchen.
Okay. Thank you. I was just wondering because I wonder why you just didn't put your name Lunazul there as well. But I guess it's because you want the carryout.
We kinda wanna distinguish and really build up the taqueria. We're going to be doing positive advertising and promoting it with the grand opening. It's something a little bit different than just a dine-in horrible restaurant.
So would you still, your full menu won't be available?
That's correct.
There.
Right, it's the carryout. It's pretty cool.
So you'll still do regular carryout though from the?
Well, so the regular carryout, the full menu will still be available for orders and takeout. But for just walking in and ordering something quick to take, that'll be tacos on.
Did I hear a little sense of concern that you wouldn't be able to get carryout?
Well, any comments about the signs, ladies and gentlemen?
I have one question. The colors are different. Is that just because of this or did you intend to?
I think in the application you'll see that the word Lunazul has two shades of blue and the sign, the new sign is going to match the coloring of the floor.
Okay.
The line.
So your, your font's probably gonna be the same too?
The font is slightly different. We wanted it to be, our logo is Lunazul. I mean, that's our, I don't have a trademark or anything yet, but that's, the logo is the moon and the letters Lunazul, the name Lunazul. We wanted the taqueria to be a little bit different with a little Mexican font to it. And the new signage on the plaza will represent that as well.
Does that probably help to distinguish between the two?
Exactly. It's enough to tie the two together just to show that it's a little bit different.
That's good marketing. That's very good marketing. Any other questions or comments?
So this says front, this diagram says front lit. Is it internally lit or?
Within the channel raceway, yes.
Okay.
I think what it means it comes out the front. The light comes out the front of the letters.
It says front lit.
The light's on the inside of the track and it illuminates the?
The front of them.
Oh, okay. I see the front view now. Gotcha.
Any other comments or concerns? Then if there are no other comments, I then would like to have a motion, please, to approve the, the new sign for taqueria. And I forgot the address. I'm sorry. 841 South Main Street. May I have a motion, please?
Yeah, I make a motion to approve the sign for the taqueria, 841 South Main Street.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? So approved.
Thank you.
You're so welcome. You should have brought samples. Shame on you. I'm sorry, was that recorded? Forgive me.
Yes, we're being recorded and filmed, by the way.
Okay, I forgot about that. Oh, my goodness.
That's true. That's true.
Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda, approval of a chain link fence, 4028 Shiloh Avenue.
Hello, I'm Derek Garland, President of Shiloh Associates. And I knew we put out application for the fence and.
And the reason it's before the board is it's a chain lit fence. And even though this is a commercial business, the parcel is zoned residential. So it's part of the accessory pamphlet that you should have in front of you that, I see it, Sharon, does everyone have one? I can see it at the top of Sharon's stuff, I think. The accessory uses.
I'm talking about this right here that was on top of the binder, right?
No, it's accessory, is all that, is it? Okay, accessory uses.
That's it.
Okay. Oh, here it is. Yeah, I got it. I'm sorry. I was looking, I was looking for something shaped differently. But, so for accessory uses in residential, a chain link fence needs approval by the planning and zoning board.
Okay, so yeah, so one question I had, the application didn't have like a sample, a picture of the fence itself. Is that what's here? The, you're just gonna have the exact same type as what you have already? As part of the property? Okay.
What are you fancying?
We, um, we show you a picture of it?
Yes, please, sure.
We, um, basically had some problems with our neighbors.
Okay.
You know, we had a lot of debris and trash and everything else. But that's a picture of the fence. That's what it looks like. Here's another picture from further away.
So the fence is already up?
Yes, sir. There was a communication error between us and the town. And we didn't realize we had to do that. We would have done it because Patty had called and talked to the town. And then after the fact, then we realized, we were told, we were informed that it was within the revitalization part. And I was really surprised to hear you say that it was zoned residential. I know when we bought the property, it was all zoned IR, industrial restricted.
But that actual parcel's zoned residential?
Is it really?
Mm-hmm. And it doesn't mean you can't request we're doing a, our comprehensive plan? So you could always request for it to be zoned differently, but.
I don't know. Would that be of any advantage to us or?
Well, I think at this point in time, I would just clean it up because right now you're non-conforming use. So I think it would just be something that would clean up the zoning.
Well, that was our intent was to, not like you're speaking about, but to clean it up.
Right, right.
It was a little mess. And that's our office. We do, you know, business out there.
Right.
We do those commercial services.
Oh, that's what, I was just gonna ask you that. Okay.
Yeah, Shiloh Mechanical Services does commercial service work for HVAC heating and air conditioning.
Are there any questions or discussion?
Yes.
Come forward, please.
I'm Wayne Thomas, President of Hope Properties Incorporated.
You probably need to turn that on.
Okay, Wayne Thomas, Hope Properties Incorporated, 4041 Hill Avenue. I own the adjacent property. I wasn't aware that it was residential. This is a six foot high chain link fence. Is that allowed in residential?
Was it six foot high?
Yes, it is. Six foot, six foot high is allowed in residential with planning and zoning commission. Okay. All right, so I came here prepared to give an education on the alleys because I take exception to the attorney's opinion. Her opinion was given in October of 2016. The information I provided to the planning zoning commission was from DRS and it was January 2017. The town code specifies public ways. It includes roads, alleys, everything. They're all over the town. There's nothing in the code book that says that the town expressly has to accept a public way. They apparently accept the one that, between my house and the house next door because they paved it. There's other public ways that exist that are not accepted or not paid by the town.
Excuse me, Wayne, Mr. Thomas, would you define public way?
Sure. It's in the charter under Article Nine. The term public ways as used in this chapter shall include all streets, avenues, roads, highways, public thoroughfares, lanes and alleys.
Thank you.
Okay. So when the charter was adopted back in 1888, I proffered that there was no paper roads in Hampstead, not even the, you know, not even the main thoroughfare. So, and even in the charter, it allows for the town to, if they do improvements to a public way, to actually assess the people that live along that public way. So that's, that's, that's how far back it goes. So over the years, as the town grew and developments came in, like the development that's back here, if you look at the plot of the development back here, you'll see there's a public way coming off of Huxtable Road. There's a public way behind the houses. It's not owned by anybody.
Right.
And they were just purely the way they did things back then. Nowadays, when we do a development, we make sure every piece of park property is owned by somebody and the town ends up taking deed to the, to the, to the public ways, the sidewalks and the roads and that. So I was all prepared to shoot apart the attorney's opinion, but I'll leave that for another day. I own the property next door. I provided you all with some documentation that shows that there is an alleyway that extends from the property south. On page, you, on this page, which is a tax map, you can see that it's on here. I understand as of today that it's disappeared now, but that's something else to worry about. I provided you with a deed on page 294 of that deed, right about here. It talks about a deed of right of way to use the road going south off the property. So when Quaker City Flower Mill bought the property in 1939, they wanted to preserve their use of that road because that's how the farmers were bringing their grain into the mill. A flower mill has existed there before 1920. The building that's there now was built in 1920. Prior to that, there was a mill there owned by the Leisters that was a wooden structure. So that roadway's always been there.
But the, but the attorney's opinion said that there was no reference to that in any of the deeds.
Right. This is, this is.
You're, you're saying that this proves that her opinion is?
This is Danny Daley, a licensed surveyor who pulled the deed that shows that there's a deed of easement across that property.
But that's a deed from?
1939 is forever.
Forever. So your deed, when you purchased the property, you received that deed from 1939?
I, I got the rights. When you buy a piece of property, you get all the rights that existed there and that, and going back.
That's correct. You do.
So what I've presented to you is an actual, real survey done by a real surveyor that shows that the alleyway exists. I presented a deed that shows you that I do have a deed of right of way across the property. Honestly, Mr. Garland and I disagree on whether or not I have a right of way across that property, even though it's in a deed. And we'll settle that at another time and another place. And what I'm gonna ask the board tonight to do is to approve the property with a caveat. Pardon me?
So you're asking to approve what he has as a fence with a caveat or a?
Well, if you want, if you are going to approve it.
If you're gonna approve it, I'm gonna suggest that you approve it with a caveat. And I'm seeing this piece of paper. Because they don't want the planning commission, so there's nothing in the code book. There's nothing in town code. There's nothing that allows the town council or the planning zoning commission to interfere with a deeded right of way, period. And because there's a question of whether or not there's a deeded right of way, and I'll get around to proving that forty years over. I'm asking that the commission use the suggested wording. The PNZ commission approves the fence only where it does not restrict or interfere with a deeded right of way and, and/or public way. That way, you're not asking the gentleman to take his fence down. You're just saying you only approved where it doesn't interfere with a deeded right of way. If I don't prove I have a deeded right of way, the fence stays. If I prove I have a deeded right of way, then I'll get a court order to have that portion of the fence removed.
But do they?
Yeah, I wanna make sure I understand what you're saying then. You're, you're okay with the fence as it's been, been placed in for right now? But, but the caveat is that you may go to court to ask that piece to be pulled down? Or you're just, just trying to word something for us so that we don't get in trouble for what you wanna do, Wayne?
Yeah, I don't want the planning zoning commission to get in trouble. If you guys approve, if you guys approve this fence as is without this caveat, then I'm gonna appeal it to the BZA. And if the BZA doesn't agree with me, I'll be bringing my attorney in then. If the BZA doesn't agree with me, I'm gonna appeal it to Circuit Court. So rather than me spending a lot of money, you know, at the BZA, at Circuit Court with the town, I'd rather spend my money on a surveyor and getting my way similar to that.
But shouldn't it say if the courts determine?
No.
Because at this point in time, there's a disagreement between two private parties. Planning and zoning is to determine whether they feel the chain link fence is appropriate. So unless the courts determine it's a deeded right of way, their decision is, right now, they don't have in front of them that it's a deeded right of way. So.
So what, what the wording says, it does not restrict or interfere with a deeded right of way and/or public way. So until the time I can prove
Right.
to the property owner that there is a public way across that property and I have the right to use it, the fence can stand as is.
And, and I understand what you're saying, but at this point in time, they're making a decision based on the informations that's before them.
If they don't wanna approve the fence as is, that's fine with me.
And then it's a private matter in the courts. So if the courts determine yes, then the courts will say remove the fence, which is a different decision than?
Not the whole fence.
Just, just the fence that blocks the, the right of way.
The right of way that you're talking about. Well, can I ask a question, please? Wouldn't it make more sense, since this is an issue for, for you, perhaps to get this determined through the court? And then once it's determined, yea or nay, to bring it back for us? Because right now, what do we have?
Well, or, but then they have an illegal fence.
Oh, okay.
He was, he was gonna say something, I guess.
Well, it's, it's a.
Sure, go right ahead.
Of course.
It's a non-conforming use.
Non-conforming, sorry. We're talking about court. Excuse me, thank you, Wayne. It's a non-conforming fence.
Basically, we, we bought the property 10 years ago. We bought the property. We had a title search done on it. There was no, there's no access. There's no right of way. There's no, you know all the technical terms. I'm not.
There was a, we had our title insurance company.
Excuse me, your name, please?
I'm sorry, I'm Patty Copenhagen.
Yes.
She's my partner.
I'm the partner. I'm part owner of Shiloh Properties. That is the world of Shiloh. And we had our title insurance attorney do a title search as far back as she could get records. And she said there's no right of way in any of our deeds going all the way back.
So, so let's back up. So we bought the property 10 years ago. We had a title search done. 10 years ago, as we were working on the property, we had people flying up and down through the alley there. One of our guys almost got hit. At that point in time, we went up to the Hampstead Police Barracks. We talked to them. We came and talked to the president of the town council in Hampstead. The tall thing guy, I forget his name.
That would be the mayor.
Mayor.
The mayor, correct, the mayor.
First Nevin, yeah.
Nobody had a problem with, the only person that had a problem was Wayne. Wayne already has several accesses to this property existing. And so then we blocked it off. And then it's been blocked off for approximately almost 10 years.
Not 10 years, more like five.
Yeah.
I've sent a, I, I, when it first got blocked off, we had a discussion. I got some information in 2017, the same information I presented to you that I presented to Mr. Garland. Did not hear from him. I went to, to see him at his office. He referred to a plaque that was on the wall that was basically a site survey and not a meets and bounds survey. And I tried to tell him the difference and nothing happened. As you know, I had some health issues over the last couple of years. I let it drop. My attorney sent a letter, I believe, back in October or November. And the response to the letter was to come in and remove all the trees and vegetation and put a fence up. So.
How was it blocked before the fence went up?
We had.
Huge pieces of concrete.
Concrete that was laying there.
Can I show you some pictures?
Sure.
What happened is on July 27th of 2021, that property owner, Hope Properties, actually came in and pushed everything onto our property that we had, and trees and cement.
I had hired, sorry.
And, I'm sorry?
I'll let you finish.
And so that's part of our problem. They just, we just keep getting, you know, like a lot of the, the things that are from.
A lot of debris.
Debris, like mattresses and couches and all, they're all at that end.
So Hope Properties is not yours, Wayne?
Hope Properties is mine. What she's referring to is I had hired.
So Hope Properties is the, is the neighbor you're trying to keep out?
That's one of them.
But we're.
We have two.
Yeah.
The town police also drove through there. The public works guys drove through there. But what she's showing you pictures of is I had hired a guy to come in and clean up my end of that lot. He came through and pulled out all the weeds, small trees, trash and everything. And he misunderstood about the concrete blocks and moved the concrete blocks. He called me and said, there's somebody here objecting to me moving the concrete blocks. And I told him, I did not tell you to move the concrete blocks, to put them back. So that was a miscommunication between the guy that was cleaning up my end of the lot.
But we are, we are getting off topic. Basically, we're getting very picket.
That's a reason why we put fences.
It's, yeah.
As long as we're showing pictures.
Yeah.
We have issues with others.
When the, when the, when the fence went up, they pushed the trash that was on their property back up onto my property, railroad ties and a bunch of other trash. It had absolutely nothing to do with Hope Properties. I don't push any, I don't push any of my trash onto their property, but that trash got pushed onto my property and put the fence up. We're gonna bring it up, but as long as we're bringing up pictures.
I totally disagree. We took and cleaned everything up that was on there.
It's right up against.
Impeded the haul of the wag.
Can I ask a question about the fence again?
Sure.
Was this an extension of a chain link fence that was already there or is this a brand new fence?
So on your plot plan that you have?
This one.
Rest of the properties on the other side of the road.
So I can use this. So the railroad tracks are here. This is Shiloh Avenue. There's an existing fence here. There's an existing chain link fence here. So we hired a surveyor, came in and marked all the points. And our fence ties, you know, butts up to this. It's all on our side of the property line. And this is where Wayne's talking about, right through here, is where they were cutting through here.
Yeah.
And we just put in a brand new parking lot there as well. So we keep trying to do improvements, but we had all this trash. We had mattresses, sofas, exhaust fans. We had kitchen hood. We had lumber. It was just a real mess. You know, like I say, that's our office and we're trying to run a commercial.
Yeah, so I think, Tammy, to your point, we're maybe getting off topic.
Yes, we are getting off topic. So.
Being asked to rule just on the?
The fence.
On the fence.
And what, what, how it complies with the zoning regulations, right?
Yes. Can I? No, no, he did not.
Then see, we found out.
There was nothing already after before this one.
I think, did he just say he removed the old one? No, he had to do it. So he just, it, it all matches together if you look at.
Revitalization.
So it was.
So it's not a new thing?
This is where we're talking about.
I know exactly where you're at. I go up there all the time.
Can I clarify something as well?
Sure.
I thought that a six foot fence, because I had a four foot fence put up and then I had to go before BZA to get that because there was an objection to it. And I was told that the fence in the front, this is not in the front of a property though. This is in the back of the property.
Right, right.
Okay, so the six foot fence.
Yeah, your BZA was in the, in the front.
I was different, it was in the front, okay.
So basically, you are looking at, again, because it's zoned residential, that's the end. If, if it was commercial, they wouldn't need to come before the planning and zoning. Sorry, but, so it is, it is residential.
It is residential zoning.
Right, and you are looking at? Right, and you are looking at an accessory structure, which is the fence, and within our accessory part of the code, when we talk about accessory uses, buildings and structures, it says, you know, that any exception to these regulations comes before the Hampstead, wait a minute, I'm in the wrong place, please bring me back up, hold on. Here we are. So it talks about fences are only allowed to be constructed within the property lines, which this is, Jim Mark, our Assistant Zoning Administrator, did go look, it's within the property lines, because you can't extend it beyond your surveyed property lines, and a building permit's not required for a fence. The privacy fence, when you're looking at a chain link fence, you need to come before the Planning and Zoning Commission for approval.
But it's not a privacy fence, it's chain link, you can see through it.
Yes, it is chain link, so that's why they're asking for approval for a chain link fence.
I've got a surveyor working on verifying that there is a road that goes through that property. If you want to wait for a couple of months till I get the information back from the surveyor, that's fine with me.
I guess the thing, from my opinion, it's just me speaking, is I'm just uncomfortable with the, there's a conflict here.
Right.
And I would be more comfortable if it, if some of the issues that are the unknowns, you're talking about a survey, another survey being done. I don't doubt you own your property, that's not, that's not a question, and that you have a business and you're trying to do the right thing
And we surveyed it, so we knew where the pins were before we put the fence.
But I will also talk about surveys, being in real estate for almost 40 years, that when a settlement is done and the title company does a title search, they go back typically 60 years. That's typically what you see. Now, I'm not a title surveyor, but that is what you see. How far back did they go in your survey? You don't know. It's probably 60 years. Wayne, Mr. Thomas, you have something that shows that
It's not that piece of property, it's my piece of property that the deed says 1939.
Okay, for your piece of property.
My piece of property. Shows that there's a, it talks about the right of way to use the road to go south to Shiloh Avenue, and it's in the deed, and it shows that there is an alleyway that comes up onto my property that heads out going south.
So their fence then blocks your property?
Their fence goes across that alley, that is correct.
According, according to what you have. Don't you think it would be a better idea to make this cleaner and more clear, and, you know, we're going to vote on it, of course, as to what you feel more comfortable with, to resolve some of those issues? Because what we have before us, if we, if everybody agrees that it's within the guidelines, that we could approve it as it is, you're still going to go back, because you're dissatisfied with that result.
What I'm saying is the Planning and Zoning Commission does not have the authority to put a structure or approve a structure in it right of way, and I have a right of way there. And so that's why I suggested the language that I suggested.
And where is that in the code, Wayne? I'm not disagreeing with you, I just was unable to see that it was, it's a public right of way, a public way.
No, I have a deeded right of way, this is in a deed.
But it's a private matter between you and another
I don't disagree that it's a private matter, what I'm saying is that you'll agree that the Town Council has the authority to close a public way, correct?
Correct, a public way, yes.
A public way, okay. But the Town Hampstead does not have the authority to close a deeded public access. If I've got a deed that says that I've got the right of way across a piece of property, you can't close, you can't cut that off. The Town Council doesn't have the authority, the Planning and Zoning Commission doesn't have the authority, the BZA doesn't have the authority. I've got that from my attorney, okay? The Town lacks the authority to do that, and that's why I suggested, so his fence is approved, it's there, he's happy, until I prove that I have a right of way across the property, and at such time, then I'll discuss with him removing the fence so that I can use my deeded right of way, and we'll put down on the, on the property where the right of way is. If I don't prove it, his fence stays there, nobody had to do anything. And the only thing I'm asking you to do is put a little wiggle room in your approval of the fence, so that I can go forward and he can have his fence for now. That's it.
But we've been doing this since 2016, or for 10 years, Wayne.
Well, like I said, I paid a surveyor in 2017, and then I got, got the little lead up.
We have a right of way through our property when, you know, it's a parking lot and a building there.
The right of way doesn't go through the parking lot in the building, if you look on the, if you take a look at the, what was shown on the map of the tax map.
Well, from my understanding, the tax map is not a legal document.
Tax map's not a legal document, it's been on here since 1922 at least, but it shares the road being up here, your building and your parking lots down here.
I have a national realtor's licenses law, I did real estate for a while in Colorado, so I'm very aware of that, these rules. At the same time, I'm also aware that if our title does not show a right of way, and his title shows a right of way, even though he's got other accesses, it's not restricting any access to his property in any way, shape or form, that he can sue his, the person he purchased the property for, from, because it mislisted this right of way. And to be honest with you, if he proves that it is, well, it's not a problem.
Is the whole property fenced in, or you just put this up for?
Just in the back.
Okay.
What's your statement, Patty, a good fence makes a good neighbor?
So if you'll see where the yellow is, that's where the fence is, right.
I just didn't know if the rest was previously fenced in, so the purpose is just
My ask is to put in the suggested wording, so that the Town doesn't do something that I'm not
I think there was another suggestion from Sharon, which is to defer and have this come up later?
But the trouble is, they are asking for a yes or a no.
Yeah.
So, they're asking for approval for this chain link fence, a yes or a no? Are you approving it or not approving it? So if you don't approve it, they'd have to remove it. So what Wayne's suggesting is, if you do approve it
You postpone the approval.
But the Wayne
You postpone the approval.
For how long?
Plenty of questions.
How long would it take?
Has the authority to postpone anything for as long as they want.
So in the meantime, they have the authority to have their fence.
There's a lot of fence there, so we would be asking them to remove the entire fence.
We don't, we're not going to ask that.
No, that's not what was meant, no.
No.
And I do not want them to remove the entire fence. If I prove that I have a 20-foot easement across the property, I just want the 20 feet of fence removed.
Because if you postpone it, then they have to come back.
I mean, what's fair is fair, I mean
If he can prove he's got a right of way, we'll certainly
We'll take that section out and
So would it be acceptable to approve it with the contingency that Wayne stated?
I think so, on a contingency, if they prove there's a, you know, a deeded right of way, that they would remove that section, but again, it's a private matter, but
And this covers you guys, so I don't have to turn around and see you.
Right.
And that would keep them from having to come back, because if you postpone it, then they'll have to come back and ask for approval.
Who wants to come here on Wednesday night?
So we could do this, what he has is the Planning and Zoning Commission approves the fence only where it does not restrict or interfere with a deeded right of way and/or public way.
Mm-hmm.
Is that, does that wording sound acceptable?
I feel like there's a word missing, though, you have to
Private, private deeded way.
But you have to prove, it's not proven yet, it's still
Right.
We're reading, just a minute.
Yeah, yeah, but
Only, does it restrict or interfere with a private deeded right of way and/or public way?
I think she wants to add the word proven.
Yeah, once it's
She wants before the deeded easement, she wants to put in the word proven.
Right, that would
With a proven deeded?
Yeah.
Correct. Because right now, it's a dispute. Once it's proven, then they would have to remove that section.
Would it be a proven, private deeded right of way and/or public way, or you don't have any
The and/or public way at the end is throwing me, right?
Yeah, because it's not a public way, it's a, it's a, yeah, it's a right of way.
So if the road's there, it's a public way? So my fact that I have a deeded right to use that road, the road is a public way, and that's why I put the word in public way, because public way covers all manner of, as I read the
Well, then might not remove the right of way and replace it with public way. I mean, it just seems like it just
Because the deeded part is a private part, but then you go on with the public way, so approves the fence only where it does not restrict or interfere with a proven, private, deeded right of way and/or public way?
That sounds good.
Okay. That's why that was in there.
As I've always said, I may not disagree with what you do, but I'll make sure you do it right.
Are you comfortable with this? Any more discussion?
No questions.
Seems like it accommodates
Pardon me? So if it's ever proven, they don't have to come back, you know, it'll be removed, and if it's not proven, it won't be removed.
Okay, okay, so now, we're going to ask for a motion, please, for an approval of the chain link fence at 4028 Shiloh Avenue with the contingency that the Planning and Zoning Commission is approving the fence only where it does not restrict or interfere with a proven, private, deeded right of way and/or public way. May I have a motion?
Question to approve, with the caveat that you just mentioned.
And may I have a second? Not a second. More discussion? Can we talk about it?
So here's what happens, you guys approve the fence as is, I prove I've got a right of way, then I've got to come back to the Planning and Zoning Commission to get you to reverse yourselves to get the fence down, because it's a, it's a structure that you approved. And I don't want to have to do that.
So
Moving it this way gives you the opportunity to approve it, I don't touch his fence, nothing happens until I can prove that I have a deeded right of way.
Give her a second.
Pardon me?
She seconded it.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay, so approved. Tammy, are we clear in the language?
I think so, because the way it is, is right now, the deeded right of way is what the private matter is between the two neighbors. You have approved the fence, in your opinion, the chain link fence is fine, with a caveat, if in the future it's proven to be a deeded right of way, then they would need to remove, the courts would have to remove that, that section, but you wouldn't have, no one would have to come back and ask for a new approval.
And both parties have agreed that if it is not a private, you know, deeded way, the fence stays, and if it is, then that section 20 feet comes down.
And you're agreeing to work it out between you, once the decision or you find out what is actually
I'm sure they're going to want me to prove it without a reasonable, beyond a reasonable threshold.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
But you were fine with this, Lou, because we need at least, right, because we have five people, we need at least three of the five.
You have your quorum, don't you?
Yeah, you've got three.
Okay, because Lou didn't say anything, I just wanted to make sure.
Didn't I?
Okay, discussion, next on the agenda, discussion of draft for Chapter 10 of the 2021 Hampstead Comprehensive Plan Update: Environmental Protection and Resource Conservation. Do you have any questions or comments, or need anything from Jim?
So as I mentioned last month, we did have Tom Devilless go over this, and he made the changes, then I re emailed you out the revised version of it. Tom made some great changes, he's so knowledgeable, and he's the county head of land resources, having his knowledge added to this chapter is great. There is one thing that I can tell you that was, he just added, since you got the copy, and it's on the last page, I highlighted it and read it so you could see that it was new, and it is under, you know, that we talked about, the recommended actions.
Oh, I see.
And the action being to promote and encourage energy and water conservation in new and industrial and commercial construction, and that's something that we're actively promoting now, that we will, moving forward, basically with any new development, especially industrial projects, with the technologies available and the resources to do so, it's something that we need to do.
I'm sorry, Jim, which clause did you add?
The last page.
Last page.
The one in red.
Jim puts it in red for us to find.
Yeah, it was supposed to be easier to find. So the only question I had for that, so I had a comment about, like, the recommended actions didn't specifically say anything about protecting wildlife, it was about water in most cases, is the protection of wildlife implied in here? It just seemed like it was noticeably absent from the recommendations as well.
It's mostly environmental resources.
Okay.
Not wildlife per se, but we have, is this where the bog turtles are?
Bog turtles are talked about in there.
As an endangered species, that's why it's in there.
And also, I guess under recommended actions, it also doesn't really talk about, but one of the things that the WRCC does, is they, when they look into water matters, and that's the Water Resource Coordination Council, which is talked about in Recommended Action 1, they make sure that the trout streams in the area and that all water remains clean.
It does say that on page 123, Section A, down here, it does say, streams are maintained for the natural propagation of trout.
It does.
Protection of aquatic life.
No, no, I, yeah, I understand, that's what, yeah, I saw that part.
You're saying that it's not in the recommended actions.
Recommended actions doesn't call it out.
Gotcha.
It's just basically calling out in here, here are all the different sections of the plan that do refer to this thing, so, I mean, I think it's fine, I just note, when we put that bypass in, the bog turtle was
Yeah.
such a big deal, right?
Sure was. I think it's, um
That not seeing some reference to it specifically just seemed
Under the recommended actions moving forward.
Yeah, yeah.
Is it something as simple as, say, continue to protect, or something like that?
Yeah, that's what I thought, because it says in other clauses, we will continue to do this.
Just acknowledge that it's still there.
Right.
And will be there, hopefully.
What I can do is I can go ahead and add another action under the recommended action, basically along the lines of continue to protect and preserve wetlands, environmental safe areas, to, and
Yeah.
Based on what's in here and things in the past, I'll just add that to moving forward also.
Aquatic life, probably covers it all.
Mm-hmm. Probably reference the zones, the environmental
Yeah, and Jim, I try to find the environmental resource areas map. Where, is that on the Town website? It references it early on here.
It is on, it's actually in the hard copy of the comprehensive plan.
Okay.
Do you have a copy?
I do, yeah.
It should be in that. I want to make a note also, because I should have that copy from 10 years ago, in fact, I know I do, because when we met with Perry the other day, I had a copy of it. I can email everyone a copy of that.
Yeah, and again, we're just kind of giving just a general comment, Jim, the only thing, I saw the first reference to COMAR, maybe I didn't see it early on, but you defined what COMAR was early on, before you referenced it as an acronym, right?
Yes, right here. Basically, it's the Annotative Code of Maryland.
Yeah. I'm saying, if you go, if you're looking in that section, it says non-titled wetlands on page 122, is that where you're referencing, Jim? It's right above it, at the top.
Yeah, I see where it references COMAR earlier, so I'm trying to
Yeah, yeah, I saw, just saying, yeah.
Good catch, thank you.
And one of the ones, just a small nit, was And one of the ones, just a, a small nit was, where you referenced chapter 124?
Do you have a page number?
Page 125. First time I read it, I thought I referred to 124 trees. I just look at the dash, you look at the other ones that.
That's a good point.
Following page.
Yeah, it should be, the hyphen should be on the other side. Chapter 124, hyphen trees.
Do I know about an extra space in front of a comma?
Excuse me?
Do I know about an extra space in front of a comma since we're on a roll? Um, page 123, first paragraph, after anti-degradation policy, there's an extra space in there.
123, first paragraph.
Right after policy, before wat, water quality, mid paragraph.
All right, I'm blind.
There's just an extra space in there.
Oh, gotcha.
Here, since we're rolling.
Oh, I got you, okay.
And when Tom went through here, he updated a lot of the definitions from 10 years ago.
Yeah, chapter read well.
It felt like the other ones didn't.
Thank you, Jim.
I didn't mean to imply that.
Just saying.
Anything else?
Not for me.
All right, thank you. I'll go ahead and make those changes. Send you out one more copy.
Okay.
And along with a copy of the environmental resources map. And we'll be good to go and we'll wrap this chapter up.
Sounds good.
Good job, Jim.
That leaves four chapters.
Very good.
Thank you, Jim. And I forgot to mention something earlier, right before Price talks. We do have a Board of Zoning Appeals case on Tuesday, March 15th at 7:00 PM here.
What was the date again?
It is Tuesday, March 15th at 7:00 PM here in Town Hall. It's for a manufacturing facility that's coming before the board, the Board of Zoning Appeals, to ask to add a, it's a conditional use, right? Yes, to operate a food and beverage production. So, the Hahn Brothers Incorporated is coming before the Board of Zoning Appeals to ask to add a conditional use of food and beverage production and processing and manufacturing.
Where is this?
It is for the parcel left of Fuchs. So, if you're, you have your back to the high school and you're looking at Fuchs, it's the parcel between Fuchs and the bypass.
Okay.
It's parcel 765.
They already own the property.
I don't think they've signed yet on the dotted line, but they're almost there.
755?
60.
765 is the parcel. I'm hearing it, okay. Okay.
So, you're saying it's to be a manufacturing of what they do over in Westminster?
Yes, it's more of an assembly, but it comes under the word manufacturing. Okay. Food processing is really probably more accurate.
Okay. Thank you for that.
I forgot it, it was right here in front of me.
See, it's right here.
Right. Right over there. Yes, okay. Thank you very much, ma'am. Okay. Carroll County Department of Planning update.
Sitting in the press wagon with the Carroll County Department of Planning. No huge major updates going on since the last time this year. Trial and yell up, not far away, well, test coming up. But the fall amendment to the 2019 Water and Sewer Master Plan was approved by MDE. Stuff in, in the town of Hampstead was part of that. But we are working on the spring amendment. And Tammy has let me know that there's some amendments that the town would like to do. So, we'll get those worked at and make those part of the, the actual spring amendment. And we are working on the trial and yell update, which is, happens every three years. And so, I'll be working with the town on the water side, the county-owned sewer side. But we're working together to make sure everything is up to date, flow-wise, as well as all the language and that kind of stuff. And of course, we're still working with the town mainly on doing maps and charts for the cop, the copinger plan right now. We are still working on our transportation master plan, sort of taking that a little bit slower. A lot of things have come on board recently, so that's one that, we're doing it in-house and it's something that we chose to do. We don't have to do it. We chose, the, the county probably needs one. So, we're working on that slowly, but that's one of those where, as we move forward, we'll get things going. But other things have popped into place that we definitely need to work on. And just like everybody else, probably in the next year, a year and a half, we'll be starting our copinger plan. You know, it just feels like we just did it with that time again, so.
So, as for the, as far as the amendment on the Water and Sewer Master Plan, do I need to do anything on our end?
You are. It's one of those, I mean, we can all call them.
Okay.
Pretty much, if you just want to send me an email about what you, what our conversations have been, I follow that. Usually, when it's a individual coming forward, then more detail with either. But a town, it's usually, I can work with the administration and, you know, and get it done, so. We're staying busy and, and anybody else, well, today was nice, dealing with the cold weather, come back where it is, so.
Crazy.
It was kind of nice, you know, take, take my son home with the son, take my son home from school with the son who's open, so.
Mm-hmm.
Besides that, we're going strong and everybody is staying pretty busy.
Very good.
Thank you.
Any comments? Discussion? Thank you very much. Good to see you. Is there any other business? Any public comment? Then may we have a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
And may I have a second?
A second.
All those in favor? So adjourned. Thank you.